Just watch that program.
You're on.
Okay, well, good evening. Like to call to order the Georgetown School Committee Thursday, March fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, meeting. First on the agenda is consent agenda. We have approval of minutes, public hearing minutes, three, seven, thirteen, March seventh, two thousand and thirteen. We have regular session minutes, March seventh, two thousand and thirteen. We have acceptance of warrants, three, seven, five, thirteen, three, six, P thirteen. And so, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for public hearing minutes, three, seven, thirteen?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do I hear a motion to approve the regular session minutes of, is that two, three, regular session minutes of three, seven, thirteen?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, passes. And then acceptance of warrants, three, seven, five, thirteen, and three, six, P thirteen. Do I hear a motion to accept those warrants?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, communications? I don't think there is any communications?
No.
Okay. And right on cue?
Hi.
Cole.
How you doing? Good evening. Um, well, um, it's only been a week since I saw you, but I feel like a lot's happened. I know, um, everyone's getting used to the time change at school, which I definitely had to get used to. And, um, but we also had the NHS induction ceremony, which was, um, great. It was a great ceremony.
It was a great ceremony.
So many, so many students were accepted. It was great. Very, very talented. And, um, it was good.
National Honor Society, NHS?
Yes.
Is it just seniors who are inducted, or juniors?
No, it's juniors and seniors can be inducted.
There were twenty-nine new people. And actually, in your next packet, I am including the brochure for the evening, the program for the evening.
Oh, okay.
And you can get a little more information on exactly who was inducted.
Okay. Mm-hmm. And then, spring sports start next week, next Monday, so I will be doing track. Unfortunately, there's no co-op with Ipswich anymore. Only people who had run previously can be part of that. So, we're gonna have to find a new co-op. It's just a change in the M I M, is it M I A?
A.
Yeah. So, I mean, you know, you just take it as is. So...
So, what does that mean? You have to find another school to join?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that would be one option, right?
Yeah.
If there's another school that doesn't have enough kids to run a program.
Exactly. Because since Ipswich is able to, um, you know, run a program without us, we're not allowed to join the co-op anymore. They just changed the ruling in that, because they thought that was unfair, having, it's just giving them an advantage. But, um, so we're gonna have to find another school that doesn't have enough kids on their own to, you know, sustain themselves. And, um, which is, I think, we'd be able to find some, 'cause, yeah.
I hope you can.
I mean, what happens, what happens if they don't find, if you don't find a school?
We just can't run the program.
You can't run the, the track program, is that what it is?
Yeah. I know we have middle school track.
Did you say, Cole, that you, are you still able?
Yes, yeah.
To be grandfathered in? That was the same thing with golf, when, when we couldn't have a co-op any longer with, for golf. Um, our golfers were still allowed to try out, but they had to make the team.
Sure.
But they were still, two of our seniors did remain in their senior year on the golf team.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think that's a transition that they...
Yeah, yeah. It's just a transition phase, which is, it's nice for me not to have to go to another school.
Right.
Right away.
As a senior.
Yeah, as a senior, too. So, um, I appreciate the leniency on that, too. But, um, I just hope that the incoming freshmen and following years can actually find a co-op, because it's a great sport. I really like doing track.
It's a great sport.
What do you, what events do you do?
I do the four hundred hurdles and the eight hundred. So...
Eight hundred, that's a tough race.
I know. I like it, though.
[laughing]
So, and, um, and then, you know, all the other sports are starting up, which is, it's gonna be interesting. Um, I like lacrosse, all the other sports and everything that go along with that. And, um, I know baseball, I know they lost a lot of people last year, but...
And some seniors they lost.
I know. So...
It's okay. They're, they're excited to be coming back as state champs.
Rebuilding.
Yes.
Yep.
Maybe I shouldn't say that.
All right.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much. Uh, let's see. Audience, is there anyone in the audience with a public comment? What was that? Oh, okay.
They agree with everything.
Let's see. Administrative reports.
Yes. Actually, I wanna just add one little thing. I mentioned it in the last set of orange notes, but she wasn't here. So, I wanna recognize Donna Straight in earning her doctorate degree, which is no small feat.
Right.
So, we now have doctor's degrees.
Congratulations.
So, that's a, it's a great accomplishment for her, and we're very, you know, proud to have her have that credential and be on our team. But I did, I did mention it to them last time, Donna, I was gonna, and then you weren't at the meeting. So, I didn't wanna miss another meeting without acknowledging it. So, congratulations to you. Okay. And then, I guess we can move on now. We're up to school reports.
All right. So, for school reports, we have the middle school after-school program. Principal Gill.
Can I come up?
Hi, Brian.
Hello, yeah.
Good evening, Brian.
Good evening. Well, I'm sitting before you tonight, hoping to get an approval for a proposal that we're presenting for an after-school enrichment program. Now, last year, we did a fairly extensive parent-student survey, seeking input on programs that people would like to see after school. And we've been working on trying to develop a consensus on what teachers will be interested in, correlating with what they thought students would be interested in. So, we came up with a proposal, and many thanks to Deb DeFrucio, who is a social studies teacher in, in the seventh grade. She was instrumental in developing this proposal. She does a great deal of work at the Pearlie now.
She runs the Pearlie.
She has, she has extensive experience, and, and she did a tremendous job pulling this together. So, I wanna thank her. Um, and I can do one of two things. I can give you kind of a brief presentation. I know you have it in front of you. That will be helpful to the audience at home. Or I can just answer questions or do both.
I need a brief, please.
Yes, sure. I'd love to whatever you...
Sure. So, just in summary, what we decided to do, we have a lot of things going on this spring, including the middle school play. And with so many kids are involved, we wanted to, um, you know, be respectful of that, and also not take from our own part of kids, you know? So, we're waiting until after the play.
After, right.
So, we're going to establish our first session ever, uh, from April twenty-second to May twenty-fourth, if it's approved. And there'll be a course fee of forty dollars per student, and that covers a five-week session. And we have several different things on the agenda, and I'll just run through the calendar real quickly. On Mondays, we'll have homework zone and yoga. Tuesdays will also be homework zone, and there'll be, um, Mr. Lepomee will be pulling together students to create a royal review newspaper. And on Wednesday, we will have homework zone again. And Mrs. Dodge will be teaching A is for animation, which is creating different forms of animation using the graphics MacLab. On Thursdays, they will have recycle, renew, and create, which they will be taking discarded materials and trash and turning them into art.
It's very cost-effective.
Right. Recycle, renew, and create. And digital photography and Photoshop as well. And then on Fridays, we will continue the drama program with Ms. Donovan. Um, on page two, we've also developed the registration form with a deadline for April fifth. Um, and we're asking people to just write the checks out to the town of Georgetown, to the middle school enrichment program. And they can be dropped off at the middle school office, or at the main office. We are hoping to have a large crowd that remains with us until the summertime.
Sounds like a great opportunity.
So, would you, would you, so this is a pilot?
It's a pilot, correct.
Right. So, you'd like to expand it? That's how we did it with the other elementary schools. We started small, and then we...
It wouldn't be time for a second session, would there?
No.
From May till...
No.
Yeah, I didn't think so. No. That's why we thought one session, see how it goes.
It should be a real good litmus test, you know, because there's not a whole lot going on, um, once the play winds down. So...
Okay.
And we didn't want to bury people with too many programs, so that they were kind of sprinkled thin all the way around. We wanted to just do a test with the ones that seemed to be most popular.
Okay, great.
So, if...
It should be self-sustaining, is what I know.
Yes, yes. So, would students have a chance to suggest after-school activities as things, obviously not for this pilot session, but going forward?
Yes. Actually, that's how this was developed initially. We set up, um, we set up on the bulletin board out in front of the main hallway, um, a suggestion board.
Oh.
And students filled out, and we had, we wound up with sixteen or seventeen different ideas for after-school classes, and we did it based on sign-ups. Kids went and signed up, and, um, so that's how we determine the popularity of what will fly. But certainly, they'd be involved. We'll continue to survey people and see if... There were a lot of great ideas that didn't make it the first round.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're gonna re-present those and, um, and see if anyone comes up with anything else as well.
Right. Excellent.
That sounds like a great idea. I know my sister would love to do something like that. She's in sixth grade, so...
Yeah. And maybe at some point, you can also integrate like an intramural program in seasons when you don't have the demands on the gym.
Right.
Because I know the gym space is very limited. But, you know, there could be, and I mean, I see when the kids have a chance to play some of those, you know, volleyball and those kind of things. I mean, they tend to love to join that floor hockey, you know?
And that's a real trend now, to keep especially middle school kids involved, because a lot of their programs, their sports programs are antiquated.
Right, right.
Um, a lot of town programs and travel teams have taken over, and the cost is prohibitive to travel to nine different middle schools in a year as well. So, intramurals have the potential to really...
Yeah, that's...
What's nice about intramurals is they draw students who don't necessarily go on the travel teams or...
That's right.
Or the select teams, and everybody still gets a chance to play.
They just like to play.
They just like to play.
Kids just wanna have fun.
You know? Exactly.
I think it's great. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. And outdoor fitness. I mean, there's a lot of options that could tie into our wellness policy, and so, it's just important to get it started.
Exactly. We wanna get the word out.
We did try, as I said in the orange notes, Norah Cannon put together, you know, a first draft. She called it the middle ground, which I thought was an excellent title. And, um, you know, I don't know what the reasons were, but we just weren't able to, to draw the interest. But we do have a lot of students who go to the library now, and I'd love to see those students maybe choose to participate in this program and, you know, be engaged and involved in this. So, we'll, we'll see how that goes. But I don't think we should give up on it. I think the data is very clear that middle-level students are the most at risk when they leave school for the day. There's, you know, because they're in that in-between stage. So, if we can make this work, I think it's a great idea.
And as a parent myself of two middle schoolers, I would love to see homework zone take off, because it takes so much of the stress level off at home.
I was gonna say, yeah.
You don't have a whole lot of time when you get home between dinner and showers and, you know, and then you're fighting over homework and...
And, you know.
Not us, but you know.
I don't know how many students are gonna wanna sign up for the homework zone, but I think maybe initially, a lot of, you know, parents might want to...
Well, and you know, we thought about that.
It needs to be fun, so that, you know, the child will sign up, and then...
And we took that into consideration. We didn't want the parents just signing the children up to say, yes, you're definitely going, because then it becomes a punishment, you know?
Right, right.
And to make it interesting, you know?
Will there be a snack or something provided, Brian?
Yeah, that's what it says.
It does, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I missed that part. Thank you.
And then hopefully, the kids will, will get the idea they get home, and their homework is all finished, and then they'll learn to enjoy that.
Well, it's a huge stress relief.
As opposed to, you know, putting it off and off and off until...
Right.
Yeah. Well, it's also good for parents, too, who maybe can't come until three o'clock, four o'clock. So, the kids wait at school for their parents to pick them up. So, um, you know, they're actually be able to do something instead of just sitting around and waiting.
And it's nice with the, not to focus on the homework zone, but to have qualified staff members working with the students who know the material and know the content and know the teaching strategies.
Yes.
It's, it's much clearer, the message. It doesn't get confused as it sometimes can when we all sit home and say, I don't remember doing math this way, you know?
Right, right. So, if a student on a Monday, for example, they would have to choose either to sign up for the homework zone or yoga? There's not a way they can do both, right?
You know, some, I don't think so, 'cause they're both at the same time. So, they're both two-twenty to three-forty.
Right.
I mean, if it takes off enough, I'm sure we could look at double sessions.
Well, that might, well, and that might be something to think about. You know, I know there are some after-school programs where everybody goes and does homework for the first twenty minutes.
Right.
And then they act, then they go to the activity. So, they're not in a position of choosing that.
That's all a lot of the Twenty-First Century programs, Ron.
Yes. That's where I'm getting my information, 'cause I'm...
But this homework zone could, do you pick either Monday, Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday? Or is it, it's not all three days?
You could sign up for all three.
You could sign up for all three, if you like.
But so, you could do yoga on Monday and homework zone on Tuesday?
That's right.
Certainly could. You could go every day if you wanted.
And it's forty, it's forty dollars, though, a class.
Or every day.
For each, for each session, yeah. For each section.
For each session, right. So, this little calendar, I think, is a little confusing. But, you know, when you, you just look at this...
Because it looks like session one and two?
Yeah, it's, if you, so currently, because I get these for, you know, a Pembroke student, and I got them for Pearlie, she'd pick the one she wanted. I'd look at the date. I'd know it was on Thursday. I knew all of them were from true-twenty to three-forty, or whatever time it is, um, there. And if the, you know, if there was one on Monday that she wanted and one on Tuesday, she would say, I wanna go to the one on Monday and the one on Tuesday. That, I, I just think this kinda makes that...
Think it's a little difficult to read?
Yeah. That, it, because you don't know...
Well, maybe you could look at the...
Yeah, 'cause we haven't sent it out yet. So, certainly, we can, we can revisit that before we send it out.
But what, I'm just trying to, so if I say I want my child to go for this session one, this, this April twenty-sixth to May twenty, and I want him to go on Monday, so they, I would plan on them going every Monday and for five weeks, and it would cost me forty dollars.
Correct.
And if I don't, if they go three out of the five weeks, it's still forty dollars.
Still costs you forty dollars, yep.
Okay.
All right. And I guess with the homework zone, you could sign up, you could say, sign up for Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, or sign up for all three, but you pay for, yeah.
Yeah, so you pay for, each block is a separate payment.
Now, was there, the, what is the reason that there's no homework zone on Thursday? Just based purely on scheduling and...
Probably, yeah. I didn't, I didn't really ask that question. So, I was happy it was three days a week.
Maybe there's just not, it's not enough students would sign up, or...
But it could just be true.
It's a pilot.
Yeah. The, um, that, the activities, maybe someone's not available to do them on Fridays.
That's maybe it.
Yeah.
Well, I can imagine also, students might wanna choose the day. Are these teachers at the middle school now, so students know them?
Yes.
They might want to know which date. Like, if one of them is teaching on Monday, one on Tuesday, one on Wednesday, they might...
They wanna know the teacher.
They wanna know who the teacher is, right?
The only one who's not is, um, the yoga instructor. Doesn't, is not a middle school teacher.
Right. But I'm assuming one of these instructors is doing the Monday homework zone, one of them's doing Tuesday, and one of them's doing Wednesday?
I don't know.
And my middle school self probably would've said...
I'll pick this one.
I want this teacher, what day?
Yeah, yeah.
And I probably would've gone to the teacher and said, what day are you doing that?
Yeah, I'll follow up with that.
Okay. Great question.
And...
The principal might just switch them and rotate them, just to throw everybody out.
Just to throw everybody out, that's fine. There, am I, is there no journalism program at the middle school right now, or the high school? Is there a journalism program?
No.
Do we have a journalism?
Not at the middle school.
Well, we have a high school.
We have a journalism class.
Uh-huh.
We do it a little differently than most high schools. We do it at the power of a class. So, our school newspaper is produced by the class.
Okay.
Blueprint.
I just thought, wow, five weeks, you're gonna produce a newspaper. It's awesome.
I know. And the, and the, and Justin Lepomee, I have complete faith in him. He's a, he's a worker bee, and he's excellent. So, I have no doubt he'll pull something great off with that.
Okay. Um, so, do we have a motion to approve the middle school enrichment program as presented?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I will keep you updated once we get rolling.
All right, that's great.
Have fun.
Next up, uh, let's see, Dr. Tana Straight.
The Donna Straight, yeah.
Does that sound, does that sound good?
Sounds awesome.
After four years of hard work.
First time I saw it in writing, I was like, wow. Well, it's nice to be here. I wanted to come and just kinda talk about the extended school year. An extended school year is for students with special education who have individual education plans, although not for all students. It's for those students who will have substantial regression with regard to the goals that they have in their individual education plans. So, it's really a small subset of those students that we have in special education. So, it's gonna run a little bit differently this year, so I wanted to come and share it. Some of the things that are gonna be similar, the times and dates and length of it. So, it'll run for six weeks in the summer. Most of the programs will run Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, for three hours. Uh, the instructional programs will run for Tuesdays and Thursdays. And the students that have very specific reading programs, that they'll have substantial regression, or other types of remedial programs like that, will be scheduled into those programs, so that we can continue to meet those students' needs. And as well as some occasional therapeutic programs that a student might need, speech and language, OTPD, something like that. So, we're going to look at addressing those needs as well. So, in the programs that we're going to have, we're looking at several preschool programs. One is considered, um, a preschool program where we're having the young students come who are ages, oh, three, two, about five years old. We're looking at integrating some typically developing peers or children that are their age, that the parents might decide that they'd like to have them come and integrate with those students during the three days of the summer school for the six weeks. There's an intensive program as well that's being offered, and that's for students that have significant needs, that need a lot of discrete trials or other types of activities, a lot of therapeutic services that wouldn't necessarily have those same-age peers integrated within them. Additionally, and this would be at all three levels, we have what is going to be the social pragmatics program. And that's for those students that are, might be on the autism spectrum disorder, have some developmental delays, but have some, um, needs for applied behavior analysis and other areas that we need to keep those programs going for them. That'll be at all three levels, um, as well as the therapy program for those students and the instructional skills as well. It'll take place, um, in two of the schools. Pearlie will house the pre-case students through the grade-five students, and then the middle high school will have the middle high school students. So, if you take a look in, um, working this out and looking at the staffing requirements, um, which I worked with Kim Leonard and Eileen Lee, who are the special education coordinators for the secondary and elementary levels, if you look at the second sheet with the larger print, that is really, the one on the back is the one that you wanna look at, um, the third sheet. So, in looking at the two programs, what we're going to need overall is a director, and that director will effectively be in charge in ensuring that the programs are running smoothly, that the teachers are all there if we need substitutes, that the curriculum is appropriate, um, generally overseeing the entire program at the two schools. We're looking at, um, physical therapists, CODAs, nurses, speech and language pathologists, you know, to keep up those types of therapies, as well as you can see the breakdown of, um, what our estimated staffing needs are with regard to the types of teachers that we're going to need, as well as the types of tutors and program aides to meet the students' needs. And again, I just wanna emphasize that this is an estimated cost, because like, as you know very well, with special education, it's a day-to-day process as to who we have in district, what the students' needs are, and what the costs might be associated with that. Another piece to note is the parent tuition. We're anticipating having, um, approximately nineteen students at the elementary level whose parents will tuition them in to be part of that program. And that would be a revenue which would be applied toward the cost of the summer school for those students. There's materials that we'll need, as well as transportation. So, you can see what the, again, the estimated total cost will be on this sheet.
Funding source, Donna?
Pardon me?
Funding source?
The funding source is through, um, the IDEA grant. We're looking at funding the program.
So, it has no budget impact to this?
Correct.
How long does that grant last for?
Oh, wait, we get it every year.
Every year to read.
It's a federal, it's a federal entitlement grant. So, it's based on a formula.
Okay.
And it would, it's enough to cover this cost, this projected cost?
More than enough.
Okay, great.
Mm-hmm.
That's great.
So, we utilize that grant for a variety of, um, services that are required by students over the course of the year. One of them is the extended school year program.
Okay. So, it really, it just applies to services in special ed throughout the school?
Yeah. When we talked about, um, the Medicaid, the, the improvements we made to the Medicaid, this is one of the grants where we, remember, we said that we removed something from the grant that didn't qualify and didn't help make us Medicaid-eligible. So, this is an example of, that's the grant that we did that with.
Okay.
What is the position, Coda?
A Coda is, um, part of an occupational therapist, where they come in and do fine motor skills with students.
They're not fully, they're certified, but they're not a full...
What does it stand for? C O T A?
Certified Occupational Therapist Assistant.
Assistant, got it.
And a physical therapist, where it's a more of the gross motor activities.
So, for those parents who wanna tuition their children in, those nineteen children, what would the, the day look like for those children, those students?
Well, it would look like a typical preschool program. Right now, the way the preschool is running, we have students who are tuitioned in as well, and they run through the typical preschool program. So, there's going to be, um, play activities, there's going to be some academics, there's going to be some songs and art and music and all the typical things that you would see in a child's preschool.
Okay. And those children, if they needed discrete, although not those, those special ed children, we'd still get their discrete trials and their special therapies.
Right, right.
But it would, it would be just really like our Pearlie classrooms right now.
It would be essentially like a preschool in the summer.
Exactly.
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
So, it's a nice opportunity to extend that, um, for children, to kinda keep them going with their peers that they're with now, and for parents to have a place to bring their kids, so that they have that fun time.
Right. I, I do anticipate that there may be a few parents that might wonder why the Pembroke kids are coming to Pearlie, and why the Pembroke kids aren't at Pembroke. So, maybe you could speak to that, 'cause I do think there may be some questions about that.
Okay, sure. And, um, looking at what the needs of the students were, we decided that they would be most effectively met if we kept the students together in one elementary level, where we could provide the students with their explicit instruction that they're needed, um, keeping all of their specialists and all the services right there. So, the idea behind it was to keep the children together and ensure that they're receiving those very specific, um, instructions that they need.
Mm-hmm. And also, wasn't there some advantage to maximizing the resources?
Well, there is, exactly. Keeping everybody in the same building is maximizing the resources. So, you're looking at the speech and language, the nurse, the Coda, the physical therapist, they're all under one roof, they're all together, so...
So, that allows you to provide a more highly targeted, highly customized to the student's particular individual needs.
And cost-effective, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yep, all of those pieces, exactly.
As far as temperature is concerned, how does that building work in the summer?
Well, we have had, we, in, in one of the rooms, at least, we have an air conditioner, right, Margaret?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a portable air conditioner. But I, would you say that, we're only gonna, how many classrooms are we gonna need, Donna? Three, right?
Do you have what you need?
Three for the younger students, and what, so four altogether.
Four altogether. So, the question is, are, I mean, obviously, the summer can be hot, and we don't know what the summer's gonna bring. But are we worried at all about the temperature?
We live in New England, typically, morning at school, children will come in, and if those classrooms are, you know, it's gonna get hot later on in the day, but children are coming at eight-thirty in the morning, so I would imagine that it's going to be relatively cool, and then they leave by eleven-thirty.
Exactly. Yeah, I would imagine Pearlie might be a little cooler than Pembroke, just given the roof situation.
Maybe. I mean, we, we definitely would run fans and all that. Donna, was there an issue last year, other that, there were certain students who needed to be, because of their IEPs and their, their health issues, they needed to be in an air-conditioned room. And so, those students had a...
We modified for that. We ensured that they had that environment that they needed for their safety, so we're conscious of that.
But there were other, there were other groups that were meeting, though, in other classrooms that did not have air conditioning, right? Was there a problem? Yeah. I think it's gonna be okay, 'cause it is mornings only. It's not, it's not a full-day program. And then, obviously, you know, you can do things like go outside, take the water table and, you know, I'm sure they, they would do some...
Fans. And we specifically picked the eight-thirty to eleven-thirty in consideration of the heat of the day.
I've been in Pembroke when it's just been stultified. Absolutely. And, and this was in May. And I don't recall that experience in Pearlie. So, hopefully, it'll be...
I hope it's a cool summer.
It'll be nice.
When the program's running. Otherwise, it'd be...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, let's see. So, we have, for that motion, we have a motion, do I hear a motion to approve the extended school year programs as... We have a motion, do I hear a motion to approve the extended school year programs as presented by Dr. Straight?
So moved.
Second, and a discussion, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
Thank you Donna.
Thank you.
And now, we have the high school mid-year school improvement plan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello? Joining you over here. Are you sure, cuz you're you're gonna come over here? All right. Is it thinking?
Okay, I'd like to um present my mid-year cycle.
Can you see Peter?
Yeah.
It's a little darker than I thought. There you go, thank you.
Um I'll briefly just go over um the goals and uh where we are, where we are with them. And what we're doing to ensure um that we succeed in those goals. And then we'll look at our high need subgroup. Uh the first goal is to promote the integration of current technologies and enhance student learning through portable technologies. The major thrust there was changing our electronic device policy to allow smartphones. In for instructional use only in class at teacher's discretion. And uh we get a lot of positive feedback from students on that, and we also call the teachers. And it looks like about uh forty-one percent of the teachers use, uh have students use their smartphones at least once a week. And um that's the good news, on the other uh side of that, about half of the teachers don't re-use that at all. So um we hope to um find uh uh more ways to motivate teachers. To use them by um sharing uh best practices. And uh best ideas about how they can be used in a classroom setting. More good news as the, the teachers that are using them ha- happen to be in the four academic, core academic areas. You have the highest use, so English, math, science, and social studies um are catching on to this. And uh uh things to still do is that um from a district perspective. We need to update our uh acceptable use policy, our internet sec- uh acceptable use policy. Um we have a committee in the high school uh chaired by uh Liz Marchetti. Um who comes from Burlington High School, which is kind of a pioneer in technology in the state. So uh she has a lot of experience from there and she's really crafted. Uh what I think is an excellent acceptable use policy. But um we're waiting to present that to you because we want to integrate it closely with our new mission statement. And that's still in the works, so when that is done, uh a lot of things will start uh moving along.
So that's why I had it on the policy, the governance agenda, but I was obviously ahead of the, you know, ahead of the track. So when I, when I thought I was going crazy, like I couldn't remember why I put it on there, I said, Peter, did I, am I like going crazy? Did I forget something? And he alerted me that, no, while we were getting to the edge, we might be slipping. That there was a logistical reason why I did it, and we're just not ready to do more with it yet.
And and I believe they had some issues in Burlington, so I'm glad we've waited and we're going to learn from their experience and and take the time to do it all right.
The second goal is to improve student performance on writing and open response questions. Um we, this, this goal is generated from data, so uh we're always looking at our MCAS data. And our uh greatest area of need in MCAS is our open response questions. And uh we had a full day workshop, I, I think it was the first PD day we used. Um and a trainer came in and and Julie DeRoche uh spent a lot of time with the staff. And worked on uh all kinds of open response questions and strategies. And um she created a uh a guide for teachers on various types and how to use them. And we're doing this uh collaboratively at the department level. And uh through my classroom observations, um I'm seeing some uh some movement in this area. We won't know for sure until um MCAS results come out and and see how we do. And that will be probably our earliest results in the summer, so. But all indications right now look like we're moving in the right direction for improvement in those areas. The third goal was to provide common strategies and language across the curriculum to support language-based learners and deepen reading capacity. Um we did some summer training for special educators and we actually started this last year. When we had some people from Landmark come in and work with our standard level teachers and our special educators. We dedicated two faculty meetings to provide uh language-based strategies to all high school teachers, again, Landmark came in and did that. And uh through, again, through our supervision evaluation process. We see a lot of these strategies being employed in the classroom by high school teachers. And um we're not gonna stop there, there are future plans to um at the high school level. To uh further train grade nine teachers, starting in grade nine and then building up. But there are also plans to adopt um some common strategies in learning. Uh study skill strategies at the district level.
Can you define language-based learners? What does that mean?
That means um that any, anybody that is having difficulty with, with the language. With reading and writing. And um some people have specific disabilities and difficulties working in, in that way.
Processing.
Doctor Straight can help move.
That's effectively what it is, so they have difficulties um with the pragmatic semantics of language. It could be the processing of it, so there's a re- a variety of um areas where the disabilities could occur. So what we like to do is take a look at how can we provide instruction and assessment to meet those varying needs, to sort of provide that scaffolding piece.
So in other words, the term it, it means that they have some kind of a language-based disability?
Yes.
Learning difference.
Or difference.
You know, but there's a lot of hi- highly specific strategies involved in language-based learning.
It could be, it could be processing, they, you know, it could be, how do they take information orally and be able to take notes? So you might teach them two-column notes, a very simple note taking, taking thing. So that's what Pam's saying is you, you can teach, whatever, you know what the, the gap is, you can teach a specific strategy.
Specific strategy to that gap, okay, yeah, cuz that's just that term, language-based learners, aren't we all language?
Well, yeah, and I think there are a lot of students who don't have IEPs necessarily, or don't qualify for IEPs. That still have language-based challenges.
Absolutely.
Sure, they can access the general curriculum and make effective progress, they don't need any specially-designed instruction necessarily. What Peter's talking about is those students that, for whatever reason, have trouble.
Come from the, the language.
That's right, and they can benefit from these strategies.
Idea of this is to give this to all students. So the kids that need it the most aren't just getting it when it's time for their services, that they're getting it all the time by all their teachers.
And reinforced, yeah.
That's fabulous, because it's probably beneficial, like you said, to far more peo- students than we would identify as needing, absolutely.
Exactly.
Okay.
Uh the last goal is to infuse a variety of formative assessment techniques in the instructional repertoire of teachers. We uh at the high school and throughout the district uh firmly and strongly believe that assessment drives instruction. So we're really working closely uh with this with our teachers to um give them a greater repertoire. To meet, to, to reach students in, in various ways. Um so they can alter their instruction when they find out on the go. That uh what they're doing isn't getting, uh they're not getting the most bang for the buck. So we had a full day uh workshop, um actually, we had one and a half. Um the first workshop didn't go over like we, we hoped it would go over. Um I think there was a disconnect between what we wanted and what the provider um gave us. So we brought her back and uh we clarified that, brought her back and brought her back for a half a day and it went very, very well. And uh I see a lot of these different strategies being incorporated now. And we think this is gonna really pay great dividends in student learning. Uh that brings us to our high need subgroup. Um data analysis shows our greatest areas of need are in mathematics. And once again, um the areas of open response and number sense. So um the math department are using uh lots of strategies to, to tackle lists on long blocks. Time is being used to work on open response questions and strategies in particular. Teachers are working on numerous number sense drills, word problems and strategies on how to approach these questions. And there are special extra help sessions being given after school to identify first-time MCAS takers. And students on EPPs, um that's an educational proficiency plan. But so for students that don't score, you have to be um proficient in math and English to graduate. And for students who, who take the MCAS at the sophomore year and don't reach proficiency on that test. Then they're put on what we call an EPP, an educational proficiency plan. And um we, we tutor them, we do lots of things. Uh uh we identify uh strategies in the classes to try to get them to uh achieve proficiency. And proficiency tests that are given periodically. Um if they don't do that, they're still on a path to uh show improvement in this area. By uh completing and passing uh grade eleven and twelve, English and math classes. And if they do that, then they satisfy the state's um proficiency requirement, so. But we, we want to get them off those plans as soon as uh we can, so we require them to take the tests and we help them with that. Um also, based on item analysis in ELA, ELA, math and science. Uh we, we're focusing with this group in the learning center. We provide direct small group instruction in MCAS prep strategies. We also provide small group instruction in long composition and open response when we write in the learning center. We provide one-to-one tutoring for MCAS support. And then we, there's, there's a grant that allows us to do academic tutoring for uh students that we identify in need. Who score wanting and needs improvement in ELA, math and science, and that's it.
I, I'm not sure if this is a question for you or for you Carol, but um is there anything in, in the program? For um uh the, the advisors, the counselors who, for, for continuing education? Um in addition to just the teachers, I know all the teachers and I see what goes on with continuing ed.
Oh, you mean for like pro- professional development for the counselors in that group?
Yeah, do, do they fall into that too?
Yeah, I mean, on professional development days, they have.
They consider a teacher every time I hear teacher.
Contractually they are, but um with the new educator evaluation system, they're actually gonna have their own.
Yep.
Uh different rubric.
Yeah, that, that's been a real gap for years in the teacher, in the process.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it's hard to evaluate a nurse or a therapist using the, the standards. But they do give their own professional development, that's your, that's your question?
They tend to, on, on professional development days, they tend to, to uh pool of resources and work on things like curriculum. Uh for kids, they get their own professional development a lot, with, there's all kinds of conferences that they're always going to. And uh stuff like that, they uh recently, the last uh about year and a half, we've really been focusing. Our high school counselors going to get training on the Naviance program and.
What is that?
Naviance.
Naviance pro- is a, is a program that a lot of high schools use. It's really um geared for guidance counselors and there's, there's different um components of it. There's career inventory component, there's uh, it's like a database for all of the colleges that they apply. It helps them with the college process, uh there's all kinds of college information and stuff. Maybe, uh have you uh used yours account?
Yeah, yeah, what it, it basically just helps us um organize which colleges we go to in a list. And it helps facilitate the guidance department with like, if we had done our Common App, like um. What we need from them would go through Naviance to the Common App, so they would put everything on Naviance. And it just works really well with the system that we have, cuz when we use Common App, we get to apply to all of our colleges. I mean, mostly, most of the colleges are on there, so um.
Does it help you narrow, like, could you, could you say like, I wanna be no more than three hours away from home, I wanna play golf. And I wanna be in a school that's medium-sized.
Yeah, no, I.
I mean, does, does it, does it help sort that and say, okay, these schools meet your needs? That's what I thought Naviance did, that's why I thought it was helpful.
It does, it helps, I mean, not only does, like, it gives a guidance, like, a way of um connecting to all of their students. It also lets the students search colleges, so I mean, it's a, it's a good engine for that.
That's huge.
Yeah.
That's huge.
Is that a software program?
Yeah, yeah.
The GEF actually awarded the school a grant initially, but the GEF grants are for one year. And they, there's one condition that they have to be sustainable, so when you, you know, they don't wanna fund something that's gonna be a one-year only. And we made a commitment to the GEF that we would pick it up and assume it as a, as an annual expense in the budget. Because we felt like it was going to really assist the, the students and the guidance counselors, that was the one thing I heard when I came here. The guidance process is, is too difficult, parents were very dissatisfied, a lot of students had trouble. And when, you know, we, we had the opportunity to get the Naviance, I don't hear those things anymore, so I, I do think it's been a benefit.
Yeah, uh you can also search for scholarships through that as well, like, um I know uh Mrs. Robinson and Mr. Umbro. Put just scholarship lists on there and, I mean, it's just a great way of can, like, getting the students to know the information that they need. And um also for the students just themselves to get the, the information that they need, so.
It's gonna allow us to track the progress of our graduates also.
That's great, but what about training, I mean, that's, that's, I know that the majority of students, I believe, in Georgetown. Are students who will take advantage of that ability of the guidance counselors. But I wonder about students who um aren't seeking college. Or aren't being, aren't actively participating in all the experiences that the high school has to offer. And are the guidance counselors, is there an awareness of who these students are? And, and how to reach out to them and if they're feeling, if there are students, I only imagine, who might feel like I don't fit in here. This isn't, I'm having a really bad time at this school, I hate this school, everybody hates me, I don't belong to any of these groups. Like, what, what resources, what does the school do to identify, reach out to, work with those students?
Well, that's a long answer, but I'll try to, first, we'll start with identification. We, we do a thing whi- which is called the star chart. And we uh, we have uh all of the, the students' names available to all the teachers. And teachers come by and put a star next to their name if they know them well enough that they feel that they could write a, a college recommendation for. And it's not to write a college recommendation, it's just an indicator of how well you know someone.
Okay.
And most kids have lots of stars, and the kids that, that don't have any, which I don't think that may have had, maybe one or two once in a while. But uh uh the people that have a few, then we reach out, that, those are the red flags that we reach out to those kids.
Great.
And um we uh, we counsel them, we, we do a lot of career inventory stuff. There's, there's a lot of, uh we hear about the college stuff all the time because we, the vast majority of our kids are going to either.
Right.
Seventy-six percent last year went to a two-year college and another uh.
Four-year.
Four-year college and, and uh another fifteen percent went to a two-year.
Yeah.
We have kids that go into the military, recruiters come in. Um and we work with uh a, another mechanism for identification as our career inventory that we give. So um again, most people are, are headed toward college. But we also try to help the other kids and we have a school-to-career program that we try to um bridge that gap with. And, and, and other things, so it's, it's kind of a long answer and you can get very specific.
It feels to me like because the percentage is so small.
Yeah.
Because you hear, you know, seventy-six. because you hear, you know, seventy-six percent of the students are going on to college. It feels like, well, those are the students, sure, we, it's our biggest group, so we gotta meet their needs by having these programs and I just can't help but think about those little tiny percent of students, is anybody paying attention?
Well, we try to pay attention to everybody and, and those are some of the ways that we try to identify. And it's a small school, so it's, that's a big benefit, so.
And you have a school adjustment counselor, and, you know, I mean, there are support staff and there are guidance counselors and each guidance counselor has a caseload. So it, you know, I'm sure that they, they know which kids are still struggling to kind of figure out what, what's gonna happen for them. And a lot of kids graduating, they still don't know what's, what's gonna happen, you know?
I, I just more worry, I guess my-
You want anybody to be invisible?
Yes.
That's a good way to put it.
That's, I, that's the thing, you know, and I think if you wanna be invisible at that age, there's really good ways to hide yourself.
Are, are the guidance counselors required to take some of these outside? I'm calling continuing ed for lack of-
They have to maintain their license, they have to, they have to do, uh, professional development like we all do.
Sometimes on PD days, um, there'll be sessions where like the, let's say, all the guidance and school adjustment counselors will get together. And they'll work on a district-wide plan for programs for bullying prevention. Or they'll, they'll look at, the district-wide K through twelve initiatives that affect, you know, all kids in our social curriculum areas, you know, so they, they do that quite a bit on the PD days too, so it's not always outside.
A lot of time, two years ago, on the bullying curriculum.
And then youth risk behavior survey and looking at the results of that. So, and they don't really have time to get together often as a district, so it's a good opportunity on those days.
Yeah, and their, their field is so broad that it's hard to, and there are so few of them, it's really not cost-effective to bring in a provider to just work with them. It's, we're better off, you know, sending them off to various things and that's, that's what we do most of the time. There's, there's all kinds of conferences out there, they're, they're going all the time.
And sometimes our own people provide internal, like, Dr. Carr did some work on working with children with detention deficit disorder in the classroom and what are some strategies that, you know, we could be using, so we, we, we do some of that too. And they, they can get professional development points for presenting as well.
He's an excellent presenter, very well qualified.
That's great.
Into some of his workshops.
That's great.
Uh, is seven, uh, just, is seventy-six percent, uh, attending four-year college, is that considered a, a great statistic?
It's considered a good statistic, I mean, when you add that to the two-year colleges, you know, you end up in, in the ninety, you know, over ninety percent of the kids going on to further education. Some kids go to technical, to technical schools as well and, you know, there's a, there's a lot of information now about people going to the trades. And the opportunities that are available to them are, are opening up, you know?
And then a lot of those two-year colleges, the community colleges, those kids will go from there to state school, so it'll end up being a four-year college.
Yes, I, I think that, um-
I heard that today for the first time, that stat, and I was just curious where it falls in the whole.
Yes, and, and it varies from year to year, but it's always been, at least in the six years I've been here, over ninety percent of the students choose to go on to further education, but that, you know, that's certainly, like you said, there, there are also children who choose to go to the world to work, you know, and get right into the workforce, you know, or military.
There's so much critique of higher education out there and it's just growing and what I'm watching, so.
Right path for each child, the best path for the individual child is the goal.
Great.
All right, so, um, do I hear a motion to approve the mid-year school improvement plan for Georgetown High School as presented?
So moved.
Uh, any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, thank you very much.
So that takes care of administrative reports, superintendent's information for the committee.
Brett, I just included, um, just some information that we received, um, from the NRMAC Special Education Collaborative regarding a notification of an increase in their tuition. Um, and I believe their tuition was going up five, five percent. Uh, for, for, let's see. Five percent for non-members. And tuition, um, we are not a member, as I understand it, of the NRMAC Special Education Collaborative. Although we do have students who attend the collaborative, because that's always an option that we have. But my purpose in putting this in here for you is, you might have heard us discuss, Anne's mentioned several times, that we have, we, we keep a close eye and watch on this because, you know, we have had situations in the past. We budget four percent tuition increases for this purpose. For, for each of our students that's in another district placement, but, you know, we have had situations in the past where the state has approved tuition increases in some schools of twenty-four percent, thirty-two percent in one year. So we just like to keep the committee abreast of what, you know, what we're hearing about tuition increases. So it's really, that's why it's in under superintendent's information.
And so we budgeted for this increase, is that correct?
We budgeted four percent.
And it's going up five percent?
Well, as I look at it, we are a non-member, so yes, five percent.
And so how do you anticipate that impacting our budget?
Well, we have to take a look at the end of the day, we, we budgeted for what we understood to be the case, but we may have some changes before July one, maybe, you know, our transportation costs for a student might go down, you know, maybe a student may move, you know, we, we don't know. So we, we just keep a press, a breadth of it and will, if we have to make transfers, we, we will bring those to you.
Appreciate the heads up. Okay, uh, I don't think there are any financial reports.
No, there aren't.
All right, the subcommittee reports, budget and finance is, no report on that.
No, okay, just to mention maybe the FinCom meeting that's coming up.
Right, the date of that.
From the twen- for the twentieth?
That's the twentieth of March?
Twentieth of March, I don't know if, I know Anne's planning to be there, I'm just not sure if anyone else from the committee is planning to be there. You're planning to come, Pam, okay?
It was going to be posted as an open, as a, uh, meeting, so that more than-
Yes, yes, yes.
Could show up, so anybody can show up in that regard.
Yep.
Uh, let's see, governance, I don't think there's anything.
Um, yes, we, see, we just met this week and we are going to be meeting again on Tuesday, the nineteenth at twelve o'clock. And we have been discussing headlights policy, acceptable use policy, the Baker Adams application form. And a resolution protocol draft, Alana, that Carol came up with, which is excellent.
We talked about it today.
Yes, we're looking at that and going to be suggesting what we need to before, if we show it to the committee. And then you'll be able to see it and let us know what you think.
Great, thanks.
Negotiation, subcommittee, who would that be?
Well, let's see, so we're, um, we're working with the union, um, the teachers' union on, uh, fine-tuning the, uh, agreement for the, uh, teacher evaluation document. I think we're very, very close on that, the union actually, um, is currently reviewing it in their, um, adminis- what, Mike, what do you call that, your executive team, no? Executive board, yeah, negotiation team. And, um, you know, Joe, Joe, uh, asked me to look into a couple of other things, so I think we've got just a little bit more work on that. But, uh, then hopefully we're going to be able to bring that before the committee in April. And, uh, then we, we're establishing a, I guess you'd call it a, an advisory committee that's gonna be comprised of staff as well as administration. And, uh, that committee will really oversee the implementation of it, so we'll make decisions about how are we gonna train people. You know, um, you know, the, the logistics of how to, you know, what are we gonna do about district, uh, district agreed upon assessments. A, a number of things that just need to be worked out, uh, that don't need to hold up the negotiations process, but need to be done. So we'll be, we'll be working on that, um, and then in terms of the GISA, we're really close on that as well. Um, in fact, right now, we're working on, uh, some job descriptions. And once the job descriptions are in the shape we like, I think we're ready to bring it forward for ratification to both unions. Been a very positive process, uh, and, uh, you know, I, I think it's, it's always good to, to hear what kinds of things the staff has as interest, and for them to have a chance to hear what, you know, what we have to consider. And, um, I think the end result is, is, is going to be positive for everybody.
That's great, great.
Excellent. Public relations.
Public relations, we have, we have not had a meeting in quite a while, but we do have one planned for Friday, the twenty-second at eight-thirty AM. Look forward to it.
Safety.
We just had a safety meeting this morning, actually. And, uh, we discussed bus evacuation drills, which are going very well, so that the children, the students know what to do if there was ever an emergency in, on a bus. Um, and the school liaison officer position, which is also going very well.
Yes, there was very, um, actually it was very nice to hear from the site administrators um, about, you know, their, their feelings about how having a liaison officer, even though there are three of them, they're, they're all great. And, you know, what the, what they've seen as the positives to that. You know, I think that's very compelling when you hear it from them, as opposed to myself or the chief of police who, you know, who obviously believe in it. Um, and, uh, the chief actually said that he, in his budget presentations, he's been talking with the appropriate people about the possibility of maybe reinstating, you know, getting money to reinstate, you know, a single school resource officer. Um, and, you know, obviously that's in the process and we don't have any resolution to whether that will happen or not happen. But I did offer the services and I think they were thinking maybe Guy would be a good person, uh, to talk, if there was anybody, you know, who was trying to make the decision, who wondered, well, what, you know, what, what is the benefit to it? And is it something that we really need? And obviously I think, uh, talking to someone who uses the service every day is, uh, always a good idea and maybe even talking to a couple of kids. Um, I don't know, do you have anything to add on that call? I mean, what's your, what's your sense of how, how people, you know, perceive the officer in the school?
Well, I mean, they, all they know is that he's just there, he's there for their safety. I mean, and they understand, especially events like, um, Sandy Hook, stuff like that. They, they know that it's, it's safety, that he's there, I mean, I don't think he's threatening, he's just there. I know he stands at the lunches and he just, you know, watches the kids and people respect him. I, the only thing is, um, you know, no one really talks to him, he just sits there, stands, I mean, you know.
Elementary school, it's a little different, right, they get excited when they see him come.
But, um, and, I mean, just in my personal opinion, I, I'm glad that we have someone there. And I think it just, it adds a level of comfort to the kids that are there, just to know that, you know, there's someone there to protect them, so.
Would there be anything that could help engage the student body with the police officer?
Well, I, I, I think that in the past that has happened more, I think we just reinstated it within the last month or so. I know when Jim Rotten did it, and actually when Derek Jones did it, I mean, he actually did some teaching. Um, you know, they, they really, especially Jim Rotten, I think, you know, when we had, when we had him in the district, remember, we had him for multiple years, I think he was there for four? Three or four anyway, three, I think three.
I remember him, just, you know, interacting more with the students and I know he'd come into classes, maybe give just a short presentation of what he does and why he's there, should be, I mean, I'd love that. And I know students would like that too, just to know, you know, what's going on.
Well, Detective Rotten has been a certified high school teacher for twelve years, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, he started as a teacher.
I didn't know that.
Students, he likes, he loves high school students, so.
But I, and I, and I think, you know, it's like anything else, right, forming relationships happens over time. And, um, I think, you know, that, it would, when it was one single individual that was there basically five days a week, it's a little easier to develop those relationships.
So this person's changing?
Well, right now, right now, the, what's been funded right now and through a negotiation with the teacher, with the, um, union. Um, they, the chief has been able to work it out, so there are three officers. So there's, um, Detective Sullivan, Officer Sullivan, Detective Rotten and Officer Godot, right? Godot. And, um, they, they go on a rotating basis, so there's like two days, one of them's in there, next two days, another one, and they rotate. So it's a little harder to form those relationships, but I think, you know, the goal was to provide that comfort, that sense of safety. And that is definitely something that people are reflecting that it's, it's occurring. So what would be great in the long run is if we could figure out a way to go back to the model of the school resource officer, one single individual trained who can be in the schools and interacting a little bit more, yeah, yeah. But it, this is great and we're grateful for the funding, you know, for, till June.
Okay, uh, school building committee, we met March twelfth. The, um, two items worth noting, the project, uh, as we're now into construction documents is on budget. It's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, off of the, the actual number. So it's, it's doing excellent as far as the budget is concerned at this point in time. And the project was voted on to have it go in front of the planning board for their, um, review and approval, uh, through their process. Um, it was a, it was a great discussion about that and it was good to see that, uh, it was a good discussion for all. So those are the two items that probably are, are highlights. And the rest is, is scheduling and we, we just met what, uh, I went through the scheduling before.
Tuesday.
Not that long, Tuesday, so, uh, but I guess, construction documents briefly highlighted, construction documents, we're in it now, that phase. And they're to be completed, uh, this August. And then there's one month of bidding, which is September. And then construction is supposed to begin November two thousand thirteen this year, it's amazing. Uh, and then occupying the new building, September two thousand and fifteen. And then for the school building committee, we have, the next meeting is scheduled for April ninth, which is a Tuesday. And as far as the middle high school is concerned, nothing has changed there, there's, they're still in the schematic design phase, which ends December, this December. And then it goes to the MSBA for their approval in January of two thousand fourteen. Town vote comes before the town, May two thousand fourteen for the middle high school. And then assuming it's approved, go into construction documents, May through December two thousand fourteen. Bidding, uh, one month, two months and construction start for the high school renovations, uh, March two thousand and fifteen. With a substantial completion, August two thousand fifteen. So the completion dates actually, September and August of two thousand fifteen for both projects. That's gonna be an interesting, uh, transition time for the schools, it's gonna be a lot going on.
And we'll, we'll have to really coordinate that really very well, cause there are some, there are some renovations to the middle high school that can't be done until the sixth grade vacates. But there, there are other things perhaps that could be done over the course of a number, a number of years. So I, I, Rob's, uh, got those dates from, um, from a, a document that was produced by the OPM. And I'll, I've asked Laura to put it in your packet for both of those projects for the next meeting. So you'll be able to look, it's like a Gantt chart and you'll be able to see it visually.
So, that, those are the subcommittees, um, old business.
Yep.
Baker Adams criteria discussion and Carol, maybe I'll-
Yeah, okay, well, um, the committee at their last meeting kind of remanded this back to governance. So, uh, Barbie, Pam and I, as she said, met recently. One of the things we talked, we, we reviewed the application, um, and, uh, tonight, you know, we weren't able to reach a resolution in terms of, uh, a recommendation that would come forward to you. I did speak with, um, Anne, who wasn't able to be here tonight. And, um, you know, her perspective was, she, she would prefer not to see a lot of things changed on the document, the, the application. Because her feeling is that, you know, we don't wanna be in a position where we're making some assumptions, like, you know, the financial need. You know, she's a little nervous if we collect some of the information we talked about, that we may be, it may drive assumptions that we don't have enough information with which to make. She was also a little bit worried about, uh, you know, prioritizing or weighting the criteria. Because, uh, she, she feels that it's, it would be difficult then to make sure that everybody considered the total picture. You know, if we were too focused on like, let's say, the community service slash essay, and that was fifty percent, you know, and, you know.
The application says the criteria will be equally.
Yes, it does, but we, one of the things we were talking about was, we were asked to do is to take a look at whether or not there need, we would wanna recommend any changes.
The goal is to stay within the spirit of what Baker Adams wanted.
Absolutely.
In the reading of his will and his biography, and we just wanna make absolutely sure that the application reflects that he would be pleased with that.
Absolutely.
I, my, my take on the way it went last year was that it went well. Um, and the vitality of the subjectivity of everybody and, you know, that was where the, the, the life of it seemed to come from. And, and I, I thought that was pretty great. I think the problem was we only had one meeting and it was really rushed and pinched. And if there was one more meeting, um, that would, that would, I think, help an awful lot.
Yeah, this year we talked about actually having a specific meeting, you know, where we didn't have another meeting on other si- on the other side of it. And then the other thing, I think Barbie made a good point when we were talking about, uh, you know, it's, it's numerical. In order to be fair to everybody, you know, because we don't want it to be, oh, I know Cole, he's a great kid, he, you know, he's getting scholar. You know, he's, he's, our, his application has to, you know, be based on merit. So we obviously number them. So that there's a little bit of objectivity and then it's numerical in terms of the point totals. Um, there was a kind of a confusion last year in, in that spreadsheet. In fact, it wasn't correct the first time. And, uh, that, it wa, so it was very confusing. I think when we started, if people were trying to, that were trying to make it numerical. Numerical to some extent, we're operating from the actual numbers and so I think we can make improvements on that as well.
I know, I wasn't, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't have any, um, suggestions to submit to the committee when you were discussing this, but it occurs to me now. That, is it possible for somebody, when these are submitted, to number? When, before they're photocopied for us, to number all the applications, to make a master list that associates a number with the name of the student? And then when we receive the application, to have the student's name removed? So that we don't actually know who, whose application we are looking at? We are only looking at what they report?
Yeah, we, we can certainly do that.
Because I, I actually, I, I, I was troubled. I mean, we reviewed these. It was one of my earliest first meetings. Perhaps the very first meeting. And, and there was repeatedly, uh, people said, well, I know this family or I know this. And that troubled me so deeply, because I didn't know anyone. And so I knew I was only looking at what was being presented to me. And I think if we could do, you know, if we, if they could all be anonymous to all of us. And you might have a suspicion about who they are based on the activities or something that you see. But to have the student's name removed might make it a little bit more objective for all of us.
I think that's an excellent idea.
I agree. Oh, I just, it takes away that whole bias, even though you're trying to be very unbiased when choosing. Having the knowledge of the person and having even just a subconscious judgment of them can affect your ruling on.
Remove that bias.
It also lends a little credibility to people who might be concerned that we are biased or why didn't this happen this way and.
Sure, that's not a problem.
Great. I know it adds a little bit more. Laura, I'm assuming you're the one doing that.
A little bit of white out in the spreadsheet. So I think having the, having the, having the single date to do it, you know, sufficient time. Having, you know, a, some kind of a tally sheet that, that everybody, everybody submits the same way. Um, and that would help. And then this removal of the names.
Can I just ask Cole, did, were you able to talk to any students?
Yeah, I was. I brought it up to, yeah, I brought it up to my student council. And they, we read through the application and, I mean, the first sections, one through three are pretty straightforward. I mean, it's just name, address, then it's family information, academic information. So we found that that really wasn't hard to grasp, as in like, you know, exactly what's needed. Um, when it comes to section four and five, I know we talked about Anne, I know what you just said. How she doesn't want to put an emphasis on one part. I, from what I understood from the last meeting is she did want it, or you guys did want to put an emphasis on community service. So, um, in that case, if from Anne's recommendation, um, previously and from your recommendation previously, I brought it up. Like, this is what they really want community service to be, um, kind of shine through. And how maybe students didn't really understand that. And I had them read through and see what jumps out at you as the most important thing. And they, I mean, it was various answers. Sometimes it was the first one on the list, like, um. Volunteer work. That was the first thing on the list for section four, um, in list in order of importance. So I was like, well, that's good, because that's really what they, they were looking for. But then when it comes to the essay, um, explain how your leadership, participation, social activities, academic accomplishments and volunteer efforts. They didn't really find volunteer efforts to be the focal point of the essay, which is, I mean, if you guys don't want that, then that's great. Because you want it, you want it to be equally, um, prioritized in, in the sense that you don't want one thing to. Be, uh, outweigh the others if you're doing something else. But in my opinion, I found that it was definitely criteria. I didn't find it like, oh, I don't have to put in volunteer work. It, it's not needed. Like, I found it important from the list that was given and from the essay. So, and so did my student council.
But it sounds like maybe you didn't, it didn't jump out at you in those, that volunteer and community service, which is what I thought was gonna happen. And that's actually important feedback, because, because, you know, I think the spirit of the people, because we don't have the history. Anne has a little history, because she was, she was on the, she's been on the committee for a while. And she said there've been various discussions and iterations, like, you know, should sports be considered a, a community activity? You know, it's not really, you know, it's not really community service, but then again, you know, some kids are, are so busy with school and sports that. They don't have a lot of time to do things within their community. But yet they're giving back to their school by participating on a sports team. So I think Anne's perspective is that she, her sense is that because there was nothing specified in Baker Adams' will. That it should be about community service. We're making the judgment that he was a guy who cared about community, because he did so many things within the community. But, you know, he just really wanted to make sure that deserving students had the opportunity to further their education. So, um, if we, if, it looks like what it says right now is that all of those things are important. And it's your job as a student to sort of, sort of show how well-rounded you are. And that's, and that's why the community service thing isn't highlighted in a different way.
We, we talked about how it's really important for students, we think, to read his biography and really show us your sense of. I mean, when I read his biography, I see community service just comes right out there. That's his. So, I don't, but is it possible in future years? I mean, it sounds like this is a discussion we could have. After we award, you know, at this point, this application has gone out to the students. So we need to award the scholarship based on what the application is asking for, the way the students are understanding it. Which is that anything in this list here, they can use and it can, and we need to weigh it equally.
That's right.
We can, we can either say the committee believes that, you know. We can reward it just to say, read Baker Adams biography. And what do you believe he would value in what you have done? How would you be worthy, you know? We could say it that way, or we could say, we, we understand Baker Adams from his biography, to be someone who valued community service. You know, how, I think just the prompt. It's how we ask for, how we ask for, we could change.
But honestly, education was important to him too, because if you see here, you know, he says it was a high priority. And it sounded like financial need was as well, because he was willing to give, uh, breaks to, to people on some of the things that he did in the community.
Well, crafting that prompt is a whole, I mean, that's. That's two quarters of what's important.
I think it's available in this guidance office, but I don't know that any of the scholarship things are, are been. Peter, have the scholarship things been distributed yet? They're, they're, when do they get?
Distributed yet?
We changed, we, we tried to move the, um, timeline up. So, uh, normally not until for about a month, but I'm not sure what the new timeline is.
So like sometime in April?
If I'm not mistaken, it is April first. That's when we get all of the scholarships. That's what I understand from the guidance department. Um, so, I mean, if you wanted to make an adjustment now, I'm pretty sure you're still able to. So, um. But the, when I read Baker Adams' scholarship, that's exactly what I got from it. He was a community man. He really emphasized putting your time and effort into the community. But I know as a student who has a lot of other things to do, they're not always gonna read the biography. They're just gonna go straight to, um, alright, what do I need to do? Alright, fill this out, fill it, okay.
Well, unless it says, when it says, read Baker Adams biography. Based on your, we could, you can instruct the students to do that.
And so it would give, it would make it more clear that you want it based on what Baker Adams wants. And if they, if they read it, they will get a more focused interpretation, like you're, like, within all the students. It'll be a more, more focused, um, interpretation of what he wants, instead of kids who don't read it and just kind of write about, okay, leadership. Yeah, okay, um, so leadership, participation, social activities, academic, academic accomplishments and volunteer efforts. They might not put the volunteer effort as a big part. They might be like, yeah, so I did some community service over the summer. And that's the only time they really mention it. So putting that, read the biography, um, um, and, you know.
Write an essay explaining how you would be deserving in Baker Adams' eyes.
I, I think the, I think the tricky thing about this is, um, when this was done, Donnie Cudmore did a lot of work on this. Um, you know, when the, when the money became available, he went and he spoke to community members and family and friends. And he put this together. So it's difficult for us, because we, we didn't participate in that process. We didn't talk to anybody. So we would be supposing, based on what we're reading that someone else wrote, what Baker Adams cared about. That's why I'm, I'm a little reluctant to change the scope of this, because it was developed by people who really did some solid research. On, you know, what, what he valued. So, you know, whether we weighed it differently or not makes sense to me, but I would hate to see us not keep the same criteria. Because again, it was developed as a result of some research that was, was done. Clarifying the prompt and, you know, doing that kind of stuff, that makes sense to me. But I, I think the criteria should, you know, should be considered, because we may have somebody who, who is, uh, who had worked really hard academically. And if the focus is on community service, but because of their, 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 their work in their, in their school. But not necessarily within their community, they might not fare as well. You know what I mean? So I, I think I like the openness of the options.
I mean, I, I'm glad that we're just reevaluating and, and looking at it again with fresh eyes. I mean, I, I agree, the original work that was done on this is certainly excellent and done by people who put a lot of part-time and effort into it. Um, but just, you know, based on the, on the responses that we've seen, and I've only had one year experience with this, but you know, maybe over the years. What, when you see, you know, the results, the essays that students are writing, just think about, i- is, is this what Baker Adams had in mind?
I don't know Baker Adams, so I don't know that. I think if we go back though, just to keep a context, because I know we don't want to spend a lot of time on this discussion. The reason we're having this discussion is because there were some things about the process last year that didn't work. Not necessarily the application didn't work. There were things about the process that didn't work. So that's what I, I think our, our reason for bringing it forward and bringing it up was to think about. Is, is, is the problem that we didn't know what the criteria was? Is the problem that it should have been weighted differently? Or is it that we didn't have enough time? That it was a brand new committee, most of which had never been through the process before. The, the data was skewed or incorrect at best. You know, I'm wondering if it does make sense for us this year to, to try this again. And see if the changes we're making to the process iron some of these things out. Rather than embracing it as like a massive change we need to do right now.
I, I think another meeting is gonna make a big difference.
I, I would just like to take this back to, to governance, because I, um, just felt like in, in the application, particularly in the financial section. There was very inconsistent information and if, I mean, it's, it's all confidential. I mean, it all gets shredded afterwards. It's, you know, it's none of our business, except that we're supposed to be evaluating this. And if the information is different.
I'm happy to discuss it, but I, I think, I wish Anne were here, because I think Anne makes, she was very clear and persuasive. To me as to why you wouldn't want to know some of the information that we were asking for. Because there are some assumptions that you can make. And tha- that's the consistent information. And she said that's gone back and forth. You know, we had George Moker, we had, uh, Anne, other financial people on it. And they said, based on their recommendations, this is the essential information, because if you have too much information, that we don't really have all of the information. It does lead you into.
I do think the question is, how does the committee, given this information, let's just, I, I will, I'm happy to go forward with the assumption. That this is all the information we need. This is the exact amount of information we need. How do we weight it?
That's right.
That's the question.
You're weighting it equally.
No, 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 I, I don't think you understand what I mean. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six lines of information here. That we're asking for in regard to financial information. So, for instance, we had, let's just, I'll throw some numbers out. Last year, we might have had a student. Whose annual tuition for their first institution was gonna be fifty thousand dollars a year. And another student whose tuition for their first choice institution was gonna be eighty thousand. Okay? And then we got the anticipated aid, anticipated scholarships. So then we have, we, we looked at what their unmet financial obligation. And do we decide that we give the greatest weight? This was a question we had last year. Does the greatest weight go to the student with, whose number there is the highest? Or does it go to the student who, you know? And this is where knowing the students got really uncomfortable for me, that some people knew. Oh, well, this student's unmet financial obligation is gonna be fifty thousand dollars. But they don't have any siblings and we know the dad's got a really good job and it's not gonna be a problem for them. That was the kind of conversations we were having here versus a student who, this, their unmet financial obligation is maybe. Only five thousand dollars, but because of what they wrote in their essay, we were able to discern. That that five thousand dollars was going to present a tremendous hardship to the family. And so we were stuck. Well, this person is gonna pay fifty thousand dollars out of pocket, but, oh, because we know the family, we, we think they can afford it. This person has told us they've got siblings with medical needs that are driving their family into poverty and an unemployed father. And even though their unmet need is five thousand dollars, if this student doesn't get that five thousand dollars from someplace, they may just have to kiss college goodbye. We were having those kinds of conversations. We didn't know.
Even if you had more information, you're still not gonna know. It throws, just throws more things in.
I'm saying we can set, can we set perhaps some guidelines for how? If, if we have five sections here that we're considering, so let's say each section is gonna be worth ten points, okay? And, and, and the overall, so a student could earn potentially fifty points for a perfect application, we'll say. We're gonna give money to all the students who, who we score, say, between forty-five and fifty. We're gonna divide up that money somehow. Let's say we had a formula like that. So, ten points for the essay, kind of easy to come up with scoring. Ten points for community information. Hmm, is it gonna be like one point for being involved in a sport? But three points for being in the key club? How are we gonna do that?
You can't do that. And that's why the, that's why I want you to see what the process, how the process works again, because it's never been a problem in the past. Last year, for whatever reason, the process didn't work smoothly. So I, again, we don't know which variable or which variables was the reason for that. What in the, what usually happens, I, I've seen it with different committee members, some people will set up a very numerical system for themselves. And others will not. But somehow, somehow, at the end of the day, the people who emerge as the ten top kids. That get the total points ended up being the top kids that everybody agreed on. They may not have agreed which place they fell in the top ten.
But last year we didn't, that didn't happen. And you're saying that was an anomaly based on that class.
It's an, in my six years here, it's an anomaly. I don't know whether it, again, I went through the factors, it could be. So I guess what I'm lobbying for is that perhaps we try it one more year. And then, then, because you'll have been through it more than one year, then you might be able to act the fact, say, let's reflect on this. You know, what process did people use? You know, do we wanna have something a little more standardized? Right? I mean, you know, context is important when you try it a couple of times, right?
But I do think, you know, and I'm glad that everyone's in agreement that removing the applicant's name.
Yeah, I think that, that might make another, that might be another variable.
The better that sounds. And there's numerous places, it's not just the name, but there's the name of the father and the name of the mother, like all of that, any names in the essay that all has to be.
Yeah, we can do that. That's what I would suggest you think about, is let's, let's go for it, let's check the process out again. And then let's reflect right after the process, because you will all have gone through it now two times.
Well, we'll have a new person at the point that we're doing this.
But you won't have the majority of people. You'll have at least been through it two times and maybe even three, you know. Actually, no, just two, one and two.
So.
You've been, you've all been through it. All been through it once and Rob, you've been through it twice.
And Barbie will have been through it twice.
Correct. Correct.
So, this will be the third time.
And, and I would say that the first time I went through it, it was definitely smoother.
Okay, that's interesting.
Okay, well, good. Let's, I mean, and then, no, so we don't need to go back to governance, although we certainly.
I just have one more question. I'm sorry to be like so anal about this. Is this a document that's on your computer somewhere, Laura, that you, there's a, there is a, um, subject verb agreement error in the prompt?
So, just send us a note about that.
Okay.
So, we want those kind of, if we're asking the children to be, it's, to be grammatically correct and.
We ought to be.
We should be as well, I agree with them. Okay, wonderful.
Okay.
No vote required on that.
No vote required. So, then we will move on to.
Check in on that, I appreciate that.
Of course.
Feedback.
Yeah, well, but, you know, that I could help or just assist in any way, because when it comes down to it, it's the students.
That's right.
And it is important.
We agree.
New business, acceptance of Pearly donation. So, the Georgetown PTA has generously donated. A hundred and thirty-two dollars to the Pearly School as a result of a recent author's book sale. And we have, do we hear a motion to accept a hundred and thirty-two dollar PTA donation with gratitude as presented? And are we, do we name who these are from?
Um, sometimes we do. Sometimes they don't want us to, so we don't. Um, was this a, was this an anonymous one or?
This is just from the PTA.
Okay, from the PTA, it's an organization. So, the signature probably represents the treasurer.
So, the motion is to accept, uh, need a motion to accept the hundred and thirty-two dollar PTA donation.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, PTA.
Thank you, PTA.
And we have a second reading of the international student exchange policy.
And we will wanna vote on this.
And that, and is a vote, correct. So, everybody had that in the packet from before. Uh, so we're looking for a motion to approve the new policy filed J S, international student exchange policy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Can I ask a question before I second?
Second and then discussion.
Second.
Hey, any discussion?
So, if I, as a member of the Georgetown community, am considering hosting an international student, um, exchange student. Before I move forward with my intention, I need to check with the schools. Is that the intention here or is there, do most international exchange programs have a, uh, a vehicle for. Ensuring that there will be place in the public school before they send you that student?
Um, well, it depends on the organization. It depends on the organization. Peter's had a little experience with this. Um, recently and usually our experience has been with an organization. So, they will, um, they have a process, uh, they will, uh, come and check and see whether or not there's availability. Of spots.
Okay.
Uh, they will get the host family, they will oversee the process, they will con- connect with the school. And then we ha- we had a situation where, um, there was not an organization we were familiar with.
Okay.
Um, that wanted to do this. So, we contacted actually our attorney just to make sure that, cause we didn't have a policy on it. Just to see, you know, what's, what's in everybody's best interest here. Um, and as a result, she get, put us in the, in the direction of a, of a model. Policy, which we have taken and done some adapting to. Um, but, you know, we think it is important to have guidelines.
Oh, I agree. I just wanna make sure that I, I, this is probably something, I'm glad to know this because it's my family's intention at some point to host an international exchange student.
We want them to go through an agency.
Okay.
As opposed to someone saying, well, you know, I think I, I wanna go and find a, a French student to come live and. We, we would like them to go through an agency and then we'd like to have this set of guidelines followed. And we'll do everything we can to accommodate. Um, but, you know, that, there are, there do, does need to be some agreement or understanding of, you know, we want the child to succeed.
Absolutely.
Right? So, so we don't wanna be in a situation where, you know, they speak nothing of the language, they're socially having difficulty. Or they've had issues with the law in their home country.
Yes.
Right, I mean, you know, I mean, I hate to, I hate to, you know, say that, but, you know. Um, most of the time, but we, but through these, um, through these agencies, we have found that they fully vet those kinda things.
Absolutely, yes.
You know, and, and, and we love having exchange students. They, they enrich the community overall. I mean, there was one student that came in and she was on the cross-country team. I went to the cross-country banquet and it was just, she just fits so right in and, you know, just, it was, it was awesome.
This is Jen.
Yeah, on, on both sides of it. And Peter, you've had really good experiences with foreign exchange students, right?
Always, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's something we, we like to encourage, but we also just wanna make sure we do have some guidelines.
Sure.
Because we have had more inquiries than, it, that more have been popping up, I think, in the last couple of years.
I think I haven't begun the exploration of the process, but then I see there's a possi- I hadn't probably thought it through well enough to think, oh, gosh. Just assumed they would go to Georgetown because of my kid for a year, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But there's, there does need to be, would, we'd like to have these guys put in place. And then there won't be a lot of confusion.
That's great. It's very reassuring actually to know there's.
Okay, uh, seeing no more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set. And we do not have executive session.
We do not.
Thank you all for coming. Appreciate, appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Uh, this meeting, motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
Yes, aye. The second will I second, sorry.
Any discussion, no discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 This meeting is adjourned.